My name is John Healy. I'm vice chair of the Pottuckville Citizens Council. And with me is Deb Ford Gianni, chair of PCC. Tonight, we're holding a discussion with the two candidates for District One City Council. Councillor Danny Roark and councillor Rodney Elliott. The questions that will be asked have been submitted by residents of Pottuckville. We'd like to thank the members of the historic 500th Club of Evangel Church for the use of their church facilities, and to LTC for publishing this video on the website. You haven't put the coin.
Do you have a coin?
I don't.
That's so funny.
All right, who would like to hold it in here? All right, ready? As it is, would you like to introduce yourself first? All right. Yeah, the first item on our agenda is the introduction of the candidates. Councillor Elliott won the toss and has elected to go first, so councillor Elliott. All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rodney Elliott, and I'm running for the Pottuckville District Council seat. First, I'd like to thank the voters for placing your trust in electing me to serve from the city council for the past 24 years. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve, to work with people, to make our community a better place. I'd also like to thank the organizers tonight for providing this event for the residents. My decision to run for the Pottuckville City Council seat rests in confidence that I feel and invest in my way to represent our neighborhood. My position on the issues crucial to Pottuckville best mirrors and reflects those of the residents. My priorities can continue to be cut through traffic, illegal apartment health code violations, parking by college students, and certainly the paving of roads. I've been fortunate to serve side by side with what I would call some Pottuckville legends. Ray Willette, Al Lee Burton, and welcome. PCC leaders like Jerry Fichette and Brian Geneski, Carver, Travis Soliderman, Deb Chippam, Deb Ford Gianni, and Chippam, and so many more. True community leaders, their activism and perseverance to protect our neighborhood. Without them, Pottuckville would be a far different place than this. And I was honored, Matty, to work with them. This is the type of council you can expect if you were elected. My position has been firm on issues, in particular the wholesale zoning of Pottuckville. There's already a process in place, the zoning board of appeals, that requires informing the voters of what is supposed to be built right next to you. Now, Pottuckville has been around zero for developments that cannot always fit the character of our neighborhood. Any proposal to a limited process would exacerbate the problem. As someone who has institutional knowledge and history with leaders, I understand the merits. I will not be inclusive with absentee landlords or developers who aren't invested in our neighborhood. Now, as a direct result of the motion I filed on August 10th, the city is hiring an inspector. That inspector will address the issues plaguing the city and Pottuckville such as trash disposal, road control. I was a councillor who argued we owed the fine for residents that didn't live in Pottuckville sewer access. It was not only fair, and now they have it. I fought for sidewalks to Martin Avenue, extending the bustle of another mile and ending at Westminster Apartments with students at the bulk. I support the preservation of all these farms and filed a motion accordingly. These are just a few issues that I championed for the residents of Pottuckville during my tenure. I listened when we came to safety on Pottuckville Boulevard, or cut through streets, and had proposed traffic congresses in these areas. I'm listening to your concerns as I knock on your door, but I have listened for 24 years. I'll continue to listen, I'll continue to advocate, and I'll continue to work hard to be able to. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Danny Roark, current city councillor and candidate to be District One Pottuckville City Council. First of all, I'm a fan of PCC, the head of John, for being able to do this together, and for Rodney to take part as well. It's been a pleasure running with you over the past hundred years. Unfortunately, we lose them, and we have issues like this where two councillors have to write their job. Professionally, I'm a chief probation officer for the local district court, and doing this for 20 years. My duties include on my staff, dealing with those with addiction issues, and those that are at risk. I have a wife, April, children, Ellie and Zach. Well, 20 years ago, when we first started, we had a decision to make what we want, whatever we want to raise our family. And we chose Pottuckville. We love it here, and a fatter of the community, for coaching a Pottuckville youth organization, being a part of Nick's house, and enjoying being part of the neighborhood, not just living here. I've enjoyed being a citywide councillor, but the new voting system decides you're on Pottuckville for those reasons. I want to serve my neighbors, my friends, and my fellow Pottuckville residents. My email, my cellphone are readily available, always accessible. They're on all my mailings, all my literature, all my websites at home. I consider that a plus in dealing with the issues in the community. In knocking on doors over the past six months, I've dealt with hundreds of residents that have concerns, such as traffic, yard rates pick up, speeding and things like that. The overall sentiment of Pottuckville is that it's a great place to live, it's a great place to raise a family. And I hope to continue that as a district councillor. Accessibility, communication skills, and collaboration skills, I would like to test. It can only be good to serve council, also to work on a citywide level to get things done, not just in the neighborhood, but citywide as well. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you both. Let me outline today's discussion. We received a large number of questions from Pottuckville residents. We've combined some of them in order to come up with 25 questions that represent the concerns of Pottuckville residents. Each of you will have up to two minutes to respond to each question. In a previously televised LTC debate, citywide issues were discussed. So, most of our topics today will be focused on Pottuckville. There are a few citywide questions towards the end of this session. Tonight's topics are divided into four categories. The first section is the role of the Lowell District City Council. The second section of questions is life in Pottuckville. The third is the DPD housing report. And the fourth, I think we have four questions on citywide issues. Because our questions are often specific to Pottuckville, so include important details that are needed to answer the question. Please do not hesitate to ask us to repeat all or part of the question. Councillor Elliott, you started with a good introduction, so councillor Roark. The first question is, under the role of the Lowell District City Council, Section One, the role of Lowell District City Councillor is more hands-on representation than an at-large councillor. What is your plan to handle constituent services and requests?
Sure, I agree that the district council is the only one, is the only one serving. As a district city councillor, I mean, always. Times come, issues other than the law, who will be the person that directly reflects the neighborhood to City Hall. Secondly, state in the opening statement is, you also need to have collaboration skills to work with others across the city to get something done. With a new council being eleven members now, and you can file all the motions you like, if you can't get five other councils to review, nothing gets done. I have done many times, since the time of the city councillor, going back to his first election in 2014, I would directly call the city members' office, directly call the patents, to get things done right away. You know, it's just an example of being more proactive than reactive. Just in the past number of months, when issues have arisen through knocking on doors and talking to people, my preference is, again, is to call the right person to get things taken care of. You know, example, the oil slick supposedly added with waste management, doing pickups. A member of residents contacted me, and by the end of the day, the situation was taken care of. There was no need to put a motion on, or things like that. And that's where I look at things, moving forward as a district councillor, is to always be available. Again, phone number and emails are always out there. You're on every piece of literature that I help with, or on a website that is out there. And I look forward to attending to some. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Elliott?
Sure, so for 24 years, I feel I have earned a voice for the Pottuckville people. The difference is that there'd be difference with me. There has been an email, and as years passed, there weren't emails, there weren't texts, there were phone calls, phone calls and phone calls. I would answer every single phone call. My approach is to have already suggested, and I'm setting up a coffee on a regular basis, to have a place where constituents can go and feel comfortable and feel like they can approach their city council. I'm going to hold those on a regular basis. I'd like to find another location, not just at the Pottuckville diner, and hold them on a weekly basis. Secondly, I think we need to work with the Pottuckville Citizens Council, as I have, keeping in close contact, because the people in the PCC are the eyes and ears of us on the city council. We can't be everywhere all the time, even as when it comes to district council. Having a good working relationship with the neighborhood groups, the neighborhood groups are unlike any others in, with my experience in Massachusetts. They are active in law, they are committed in law, there is a consistent flow of volunteers, and I think they're an important element in why they're as great as us in our neighborhoods. As well as moving forward when it comes to district representation, I think we need to reinvent government to some degree, because we don't want councillors just fighting for resources. I think there needs to be sectors, like police, have sectors throughout the city, particularly when it comes to inspectors, when it comes to building code, when it comes to the zoning code. So, as we move forward, I see that role as a district city councillor, someone that certainly has knowledge, that has experience, that can get something done. And whether it's a phone call, whether sometimes they require motions, they're just not simple answers, that's the close communication that you have. And you have to be active, you have to be approachable, and you have to want to be passionate for your job. Not just at election time, but every single day as soon as we're elected. And that's what I am involved in. It's not just when it's time to look to votes. And I hope people realize that I understand that, because that's my commitment. Two years, every two years, we take a test, whether you did your job, did you live up to the commitments, did you follow up on the phone calls, the emails, the texts, the little things and the big things.
Thank you, councillor Elliott. You both addressed this question, but it was an important question that was asked many times. So, let's start with you, councillor Elliott. How will people be able to reach you? What's your communication plan, starting from day one?
I think I did just mention that, I think coffee is having a place in the district that people can go on a regular basis, whether it's a Wednesday night or Saturday morning at the Pottuckville diner. People are going to know who they can reach. I think for 24 years, my phone has run off stop work, and I'm glad of it, because that's a sign that I feel I'm doing my job. And texts, people stop me when I'm jogging down the street, people stop me at the Lowell soccer field. And you know, whether it's market basket or anywhere else, you have to be approachable, and you have to follow up. So, it's one of these self-fulfilling measures, that the more you respond, the more people know that they go to a councillor who will act on their behalf, and they will follow up. And again, it could be something simple as, why is my, why is the water main broken? When is it going to be fixed, and when am I going to get my water back? And it's just not a simple phone call, it's finding out and getting back to them. And I feel that's one of my greatest qualities. Not to just make a phone call, not just to make a motion, not just to respond, to follow through and to get the answer. Again, trash, water, potholes, why is my street plot, we just had one the other day, it's totally raining. The recycling wasn't picked up. That's what people expect, they expect response from their city councillor.
Thank you. Would you like to repeat the question?
Sure, okay.
Thank you, councillor Elliott.
I'm very, very accessible, accessible as any city councillor that's elected today. Everything I've ever sent out, everything I've ever knocked on the door, card, that's, 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 not just my city, you know, my personal email, personal cell phone number, you know, it's 24 hours a day, so anything, anybody can call me, and I'm responding right away. And then, you know, if it's something as simple as a phone call, and it's taken care of, great. If something does require some further explanation and study and problem solving, that's fine as well. I have taken pride in years in the city councils as first elected, in answering phone calls, and the greatest gratitude that I have as a city councillor is helping people, knowing what they need. I'm a little bit lost on how to navigate the city government, and being able to assist them the right way. There are a ton of big decisions that I made as part of being a city councillor, but when you get a phone call from a neighbor, or somebody that truly needs assistance in direction, that is the best part of the job.
Thank you. I would like the next question to you, councillor Roark. Will you commit to attending meetings with community groups such as the Pottuckville Citizens Council to hear our concerns and questions?
Absolutely. I think I've been a steady number of citizens' councils before I was elected. You know, I enjoy talking to people, and you get a few minutes early, you catch up on things, on how kids are doing, and things like that. But again, the accessibility of always being there to answer questions, to report each month, to take suggestions, to take concerns and comments from the residents, absolutely, it's part of the job in the world. So now, being a district city councillor, and I'm looking forward to doing so.
Thank you, Rodney. Councillor Elliott, still have any questions?
Sure, I actually started at the Pottuckville Citizens Council. I was a member, and then I joined the executive board for around the years of being a collective citizen councillor. Throughout the years, I attend cases, but as many as possible, even through the COVID crisis, where most of the meetings resumed, so I have been there, I will be there, continue to be there. But I think taking it a step further when it comes to the PCC, because you can go to the meetings, but you have to be able to take phone calls, you have to listen to concerns, and you have to follow up, again, because that is the organization, and people feel comfortable going to the PCC and the members and the leadership. So, it's one thing to go to a meeting, it's good to go to meetings, it's important to go to meetings. It's another thing to make sure you're working in concert with the leaders of the PCC. And I have proven rightly that, I have done that throughout the decades, through the main Pottuckville Citizens Council. Not just the chair people who are called chair, but also, you know, members who feel comfortable picking up the phones, saying, something's going on in this neighborhood, you know. Again, we talk about a lot of the services, but whether it's crime, whether it was the closing of Old Ferry Road, because I've been on the council long enough, when we had closed that, and that was a major issue, and that's never going to happen again, because it shouldn't happen again, so my answer is yes.
Thank you. Councillor Elliott, at the beginning of every term, a city councillor receives a subcommittee assignment. What committees have you been assigned to this year, and what did you accomplish?
Okay, so I'm going to get my list out. This year, I have been assigned to a number of subcommittees, I've been assigned to seven subcommittees. And throughout the course of the last two years, through Zoom or in person, I have held, I believe in excess of 46 subcommittee meetings. The active subcommittees in large part were finance, I believe nine last year, and as of tomorrow, I think ten. Zoning Subcommittee, Zoning Subcommittee, Cannabis Control Subcommittee, Economic Development Downtown Subcommittee, Rural Subcommittee, that really met, really met a couple of times. But I've assigned seven subcommittees, in addition to sitting on housing, sitting on other subcommittees, and I have it missed one. So, I have been active. I don't think, because I've been assigned so many, and so many important issues that have come forward. It's been Yoman's work, I like to work, I think that's a reflection of my work ethic and holding meetings. In addition to council meetings, these are not in substitute though. So, I think it's important, and if we want to go through subcommittee by subcommittee, what we have accomplished, but just monetary and finance, it was a huge task, but I'll stop there, because those are the assignments. And it's been a very busy year, a lot of meetings, and I'll continue to do that. Whatever I'm assigned to, excuse me, I forget transportation. Transportation has been a big issue, which I continue to update, get information out on all the traffic issues that we've had in the city. And it's been, it's been a lot of important work, that would be done, a lot of important work to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm the chair of the Neighborhood Services Subcommittee. This year, last term when I first started, I was appointed chair of the Elections Subcommittee, which had been holding many meetings, on a biweekly basis with a new change of the system, where different things came out, suggestions, such as voting for the mayor of the public. You know, and the commander was now a non-binary question on issues, city council elections, do you want to support the mayor being a corporate official? With Neighborhood Services, which I've been on every term of my city council career, you know, I brought the meetings to the neighborhood, I'm very proud of that, and it was done four years ago. And something new that worked very, very well, we brought to every single neighborhood in the city. Obviously, with COVID this year, it was a little more difficult. We actually used the Neighborhood Services Subcommittee to discuss the election, we used it to discuss the housing report. Also a member of the Public Safety Subcommittee, I was the chair of that for two terms, down private this term around. And that's almost an ongoing, we can just see what the state of the city is crime-wise. If you have, you know, a uptick in crime in a certain neighborhood, that's where, you know, we come in. You know, my 20 years in public safety, my experience and field really comes well in those situations. And then, again, you know, being part of neighborhoods, public safety and elections, probably three of the four or five basic subcommittees, and I'm proud to be a part of it, and proud to have all the city in that way.
Thank you. So, that ends the first section of our discussion, the role of the Lowell District City Councillor. We're going to move on to life in Pottuckville.
Is there a rest change?
We don't, we don't think you have an official rebuttal if you want to use part of your two minutes to respond.
Another question, Chuck.
Another question? The only thing that we would ask is, that you rebut quickly so you can also answer the questions being asked. Because there are 25 questions, two minutes each, we want to keep this to a reasonable length. So, this next section is life in Pottuckville, and these are the questions from your neighbors. The first question will be for you, councillor Roark. In challenging seniors in Pottuckville, many feel they are a forgotten demographic. There's no senior center on this side of the river, and it's a daunting task, when you're a senior, to get across the roof and get to the senior center, its services and the events there. What would your plan be for the Pottuckville seniors?
Almost, you know, informing them of what is available, what services and resources are available to our seniors. There is communication to the seniors if needed. And also, what's important in my talks with the seniors is the preservation of our urban spaces. Many even walk the boulevard every day, they get trouble with the tonus of the boulevard, the toning, noise control as well, that's over there. You know, and whether it's just sitting down, having a coffee, a market basket, just talking about our concerns of the city, or specific to them. Many of our seniors are concerned with the next generation, and their kids, and their great kids going forward. You just try to be as accessible as possible. You know, services that can be brought to them, I think would be a benefit as well, vaccinations and things like that. I'm very fortunate in Pottuckville to have it at Maycom, to be able to have Old Jungle. In Pottuckville, there's actually a huge, you know, benefit to our seniors as well. And again, you know, getting back to, you know, what's important to them, how we can help, you know, seniors work forward. You know, a lot of times, I'll sort of a couple of days later on, if a senior comes to the time where he or she cannot maintain a home, have to go into, whether it be, you know, senior housing, and you're talking about the $15,000, $20,000 a month of certain situations. So, you have to be able to take care of seniors, whether it's a transition, you know, from a home to a place to live, or just to see what best resources are available for them.
Thank you. Councillor Elliott, do you want to repeat the question?
No, no. So, my thought, my explanation was, you know, certainly the COVID crisis has been that much more isolation from interacting with people. As I understand the question is, you know, rather than going downtown, hopefully our office services here. I would think that we can collaborate with nursing homes and tap into the programs that they may offer, or approach the Royal General Hospital to see if there is space, if there's an opportunity for the senior to work in collaboration, whether it's a leasing space or renting space, just a meeting space, a meeting room where they can come and get the meals, because I know the success and what the seniors do like to do. They like to go to their monthly dinner dances, they like to go to play bingo, they like to go and just congregate sort of on a regular basis. So, I think that whether it's the Royal General, through any number of nursing homes here, or Stuville Fairhaven, you know, there's got to be a place where we can collaborate, the city can run certain programs on certain days to allow seniors to come out. And again, you know, it doesn't have to be bingo, give me any number of activities that can be held on a location on this side of the river. So, you know, sometimes going to the senior center downtown, it's a challenge, not only to go there, but also the front parking. So, whether it's a meal, whether it's a dinner dance, and I do know on holidays, seniors love to enjoy to go to a holiday event, and it's usually a dance. So, I think that makes some sense to, you know, to talk about, hopefully do better on this side of the river, on the district council. I bring that forward to say, going over the river with the traffic, with the parking, let's do something on this side of the river.
Thank you. Councillor Elliott, there are three nonprofits, the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust, the Massachusetts Sound田园 Society, and Mill City Grows, that have recently become eligible to receive funding from the Community Preservation Committee. The purpose is to acquire and preserve all these forms and all of that. Now, communities can use the CPA funds, acquire, create, preserve, or restore open space, as well as historical sites, to use for this initiative of the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust. And if yes, and you're elected, what will you do to help promote it?
Yes, I do support it. I think it's a great opportunity to use the resources that has been in Pottuckville in that family for a little 103 years. When the first tract of land was sold, I believe about 10 years ago, and 35 homes were made. You know, at that point in time, the neighborhood was concerned. But I think the open space was preserved through a planned development, I believe in the Chanted Forest is what it was called at that point in time. Moving forward, I've known Raleigh for a lot of years, he actually worked at the water plant with my grandfather. I'm so pleased that he decided, and I actually filed a motion, having learned that property was going to be transferred and or sold. And the purpose of that motion, and I did not know at that time that Mill City Grows, the Auto Point Society, and Parks and Conservation Trust were having discussions, so they have, they have good foresight. And I'm glad that, I'm glad that Raleigh reached out, and he's, he's, in my opinion, going to protect and leave the legacy in that property to the Auto Point Society, because that's an integral part, I don't like the city, but of that neighborhood. And for the longest time, there was always concern in the neighborhood and neighbors. I live right across the street, so I think this is a great opportunity to use Community Preservation Act money to work with the Auto Point, to work with Parks and Conservation Trust, and we really owe them a debt of gratitude for standing up. They've done so many great things in the city, from the soccer field, to so many other projects that they've been involved with. And using that money to create programs, educational programs, for the kids of the city, whether it's nature walks, creating trails, and linking that piece of property with, I think, one of the best hidden secrets in the city of Lowell, and that's the Lowell Tilted Forest Forest. Tree, the Royal Forest. It's become more utilized in the last year and a half, which is a good thing, and I think that that linkage will provide great opportunity for the kids, but not just the kids, for anybody, we talked about the seniors. That resource is going to provide a perfect venue for seniors to go up and get opportunity year-round. We're going to listen to Christmas trees.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you on this, and I think, you know, we need private contributions to the Auto Point Society, and to Mill City Rose, and Rose for working to keep the preservation of the area. You know, if elected, I followed a motion just recently for the state to apply for million pound grants. Those are state grants that, for one, they preserve passive areas, and the second one is for active parks. You know, and these grants are given to communities to help preserve open spaces, to help beautify and improve active open spaces in the state. And, you know, a motion was filed a few months ago, was tied directly to the South Park just a few weeks ago, and owed $45,000 to the South Park. And there are plenty of open spaces in Pawtucket that are qualified under these grant applications, and the seniors are looking to it as soon as they speak. Going back to the Royal Conservation Trust, they have filed a motion off tomorrow night, looking up off of Totten Road, Luz Drive, Sebelia, there was some, probably on the wind back there, with surveyors having back there recently again, marking off trees and areas back there. And you can see some residents tomorrow night speaking about it, and to look at different ways to preserve that area, and to keep it the way it is.
Thank you. So, Councilor, the Community Preservation Act also provides for historic preservation. You are sitting in the Royal's oldest continuing church. Pawtucket is the center of colonial history and of rural. How would you advocate for spending CPA funds to establish in Pawtucket historic districts, to enhance our historic assets?
I think it begins, you know, without reach to PCC and the residents, community meetings with UMass School, with the Royal General Hospital, with the Conservation Trust, and the Auto Point Society, and all those people that have the right thinking in mind to, you know, keep Pawtucket the way it is. You know, in creating a historical district, as you say, you know, it takes time, it takes energy, and it takes effort, and it's something that I'm proud to be a part of. You know, the CPA funds, we're widely using use of them, we just talked about it a minute ago, preserving open spaces, but you have correct, you know, the historical aspect of it being a sort of a district as well, can be used, and all those things, again, when you talk about being a district councilor, you are one in a lifetime, but you need to be able to talk to your colleagues, to make presentations, to make good arguments of why it should be used to preserve what you want it used for. And again, I think the collaboration skills that I have obtained and achieved over my time with the beneficial, we should just say that.
Thank you.
I think it makes a lot of sense to create a historic district, and interestingly enough, the master plan, the Pawtucket Master Plan, just Pawtucket, there's a master plan specifically references the creation of, and exploration of a district here in Pawtucket. I think the first thing we have to identify, the assets that we do have, we've identified them, but I think we need to finalize them, first and foremost. It's amazing, when you read through the plan, as I did again, it's amazing the historical resources are right here in Pawtucket. So, yes, creating a district, because you have to continue to protect those resources, but also taking care of them a little bit better. The Clay Pitt Brook Cemetery, you know, a number of stones throughout the district, this very church, I mean, you know, we can list them, but I think we need to do a complete assessment, and I think the city should do that, can do that. We don't have to link the CPC funds. So do an inventory, I say a chronicle, do an inventory of what is available here, and what is the plan. I think we also need to put together a program, and whether it's working with the Royal Historical Society, put together a program, put together a brochure, a booklet on what is available, perhaps keep that into the school children, you know, particularly, you know, we'll do it citywide, but I think it's important to try to get that outreach, certainly to the neighborhood, certainly to the people who live here, but also citywide. So I think, you know, it's interesting, I've been a law enough, but the first winter fest, interestingly enough, was at the Royal Drake State Forest. And that's a good thing, because you know what, it was, we spent very well with no money, we raised it ourselves, but it was, you know, we got a hot stone carriage, and there was campfires way up the forest. So I think that's an example of an opportunity that we can and we should capitalize when it comes to historic resources here in Pawtucket. The barnums, the coal burns, I know the hamlets, long, long history, and we, as a district council, is an opportunity to really focus in on bringing, you know, bringing the stakeholders to the table, and we have so many assets, we just talked about it last week when it comes to the Royal Mosaic, it's a good opportunity to do that, and it's a good way to exploit it, and we should be doing it.
Thank you. We're going to move on to flooding. Pawtucket residents living in the flood plain are often unaware of the regulations that affect them, and as a result, they are not a federal conservation officer. How would you initiate an education campaign to share the importance of adherence to these regulations?
Especially when it comes to wetlands and the 100-foot buffer, a lot of folks don't know, and I do follow, I do follow conservation planning board agendas, and it's important, and it's, and that's unfortunate when those resources cut. You know, this is the public outreach, and neighbors, you know, people need to know that they can enjoy, it's outreach to the people, especially to the new homeowners. How we get that information to them? Simple, looking for, you know, those houses that have been sold recently, since you catch a record of it, and send out an information flyer to those individuals, in my opinion, as soon as they move in. I don't think we're breaching any, you know, privacy issues, but when there's a home sold, even in a wetland area, then let's go out and get the information to them. I think most people do nothing. However, it's the one or two, or as many, that do go and cut lots of, lots of trees down, and then there's enforcement order, and they have to be planted. So it's somewhat of, you know, it's a growing trend, and it's wrong, so I think that's the best way to do it, you know, get them as soon as, as soon as property is sold, because most people who live here, they know that you can't just clear a tree in certain sections of the neighborhood. But, you know, if that's the case, then we can do mailings to all the entire district, they all have those addresses.
Thank you.
A very timely question, John. Just a couple weeks ago, a customer was on BONF, who was cleaning a bogged down pool in his backyard, and the pool's delivered, and you're ready to do the install, and you go, and you visit from a city inspector saying, you can't do this. And he was told, why? They go for conservation, you have to do application, and so forth, and it cost him actually $1.50 bucks to put it in a bogged down pool, and he jumped. And he's just a way, he was very familiar with the flood plain, and double for that in the past, and again, you know, these situations, we're supposed to be putting in August now, not for October, and it's a part of life inconvenience that, you know, three kids and all ready to go, and then something like that happens. My suggestion would be to incorporate the register of deeds, or when a deed is recorded, and you do have notice of the flood plain, to send out information, to send out what needs to be done in all aspects of living in that area. You know, I've handled flooding previously and filed motions once first elected concerning, you know, floods and then femur and things like that, the more information that you do give out, which is better off for the residents. And someone like that was just an example of, you know, becoming a district councilor, you have to be a knowledgeable on the subject and be accessible to be ready to help those residents.
Thank you. Clay Pitt Brook flooding is always a concern to us. Can you give us an update on any measures that are being taken to address the threat of flooding from Clay Pitt Brook? And would you promote designating an employee of DPD to study and seek grants to address our flooding problems? I know those two questions are mutual.
That has been the idea done. A few months ago, probably early spring, I filed a motion to do, to conduct a service through all of the culverts and the courses around the city. And immediately, the DPW department started clearing beaver dams, started doing inspections, and then, you know, doing more walking around the neighborhood, people have realized, you know, the heavy rain that we've had this summer, you know, I've talked to people off of Shirley and Malden, Columbia Road, and that they have noticed a difference. Out there Campbell Field as well, which behind me is really, really wet, people have told me that they have noticed that this year, you know, since the filing of motions and the extra work that DPW has had done, has had a direct effect on the water levels and so forth. You know, and if you ask a second question, you know, right now, it does take a motion filed by somebody to get some action out there. If, hopefully the DPW have the resources, the building, to have a specific person, I know now they do hire outside services, you know, if it has to be moved, there should be those regulations, they don't affect that, but there are some obviously that, you know, would benefit the neighborhood.
Thank you. Sheriff O'Leary?
Sheriff, this is an longstanding problem, we've worked with the city consistently throughout the years, and problem with the culverts do need to be replaced in some instances, but it's monitoring and it's maintenance, and it's ensuring that when there is a beaver dam, that it has to be taken care of. So I think both of us filed motions at the same time, and the deal is an awful lot time, not just, not just now. I propose, and one of the uses of the American Rescue Plan money is for water and wastewater, culvert repair, a lot of infrastructure improvements, and that foot has to be done with some of them, some of them crumbling, some of them, but it's a maintenance, without a doubt, it's a maintenance problem, I can tell you throughout the years, I don't know how many phone calls we've made to the various public works commissioners, but it's a complicated problem, and it's just not, you know, playbook is, this goes back to, you know, even behind the Vonnam Market off Eleanor Drive, where now there are overgrown trees, and that leads to the creek, so it, it's a compounding problem. I will say, the DPW Christian came back, and she has a plan, and, you know, it's, the beaver problem is not just here, it's also, when I called Public Works to go and clear off Wold F and off Monaca F, there's a big beaver problem there as well. So it's consistent enough, someone being designated from plenty of elements, I think we need someone from Public Works to do a regular inspection of these, particularly at peak time where the beavers are building their dams, and there is good evidence that the Public Works have in order to do that. So it's, that's the motion, probably similar motions that we have both filed, but this has been a longstanding problem, just didn't all of a sudden surface by, you know, someone throwing a motion on trying to get a port. It's longstanding, it's a complicated problem, but it does require the city to be vigilant, and this Public Works commissioner understands that, recognizes, and when there's a problem, she responds. And sometimes, you know, sometimes it's not going to happen within a certain timeframe. We don't know when the beavers are going to go there, go the dams, but the neighborhood, working with the neighborhood, and letting people know, that's the important, because we respond, I respond.
Thank you. So one challenge of living in Pawtucket is unexpected flooding. The gauge we use to determine flooding is located downstream below the dam, and that often gives us the exact opposite information of what's actually happening in Pawtucket to the residents who are upstream of the dam. One recommendation has been to relocate or add another gauge above the dam to accurately determine flood levels. How would you, as our district councilor, make that happen?
We did receive a report, this Army Corps engineer, working with, there is a new company, and I think that's, I think that's positive, that has taken over, they, by all accounts have been more responsive, more cooperative, and I feel working in concert with the Army Corps engineer, working with the former group, former group, and now, I believe it's called Clean Rivers Project, and, you know, I think it makes some sense. I can tell you the fire, the former fire chief, Jeff Woodward, he had good relationship, and he was very responsive, and when there was, when the dam needed to be lowered, then it was lowered. I feel this chief has the same relationship and solid responsive communication with the neighborhood organization to stay ahead of this, but I think the gauge makes some sense. It's going to take some effort to work through our elected officials to get that gauge located. I know a cost is associated with it, but I think we work through, we work through the Congresswoman's office with the state delegation to make that happen.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilor, it's absolutely correct, you know, the move, the replacement of the gauge, it's a federal issue, somewhere we need to lean on our state and federal delegation to happen. You know, when Hull actually took over, you know, I did file a motion to have the city administration emergency services, the fire chief sit down and go over what's expected of the new company, what the residents of Pawtucket, San Blah, even to the downtown, or what they expect, how it was shipped before with the now, you know, very up and down, you'd say, to be kind, and, you know, the expectations of the city has. You know, we do need, in this situation, to really put pressure on our state and federal delegation, because, really, John, that where it's placed now is not always the best temperament of where the levels are. You know, I do like the fact that our fire chief has extensive emergency services background knowledge, and I think that's a benefit to the city, more importantly, a benefit to residents of Pawtucket, and you hope that, you know, there's expertise, and the more connection and activity he has with Hull, will benefit the neighborhood in the city overall.
Thank you. Thank you. We're getting very concise. We're getting concise. Councilor, can you give us an update on the status of the proposal to acquire some of the land along the Merrimack River through private funding to house the nonprofit Merrimack River Rowing Association and their projects? Can you promise to ensure that the boat and citizen access to the river is not restrictive or made exclusive to anyone who lives in Pawtucket?
Well, sure. This is called the Work Boat Program. You know, in my grandfather, my two, you know, great uncles, World War II veterans, I mean, after that, I can promise you that that would be the case. The plan came to the city council, and as you mentioned, the subcommittee, and those, those plans were definitely put in front of the council, but with those exactly four states, that it remains open to the public at all times, dedicated parking, dedicated access in and out. And I think it's actually going to be a very good project, as long as it's done correctly, it'll be, again, educational, there'll be recreational, there'll be activities, and it'll be another beautiful place in Pawtucket where, you know, kids can go, you can feel the schools and things like that, and it'll be for everybody to go and enjoy and see if you're good with the area.
Thank you. Councilor?
I think there's some exciting about it, however, we did hold the economic development subcommittee, leading on a business, the city of all, this apartment. And with that, to me, it becomes requirements that the community is going to be able to use that facility. The idea is sponsored from the Merrimack River Rowing Club, I believe they call it, and they've outgrown their space at the Mass Mall, which is a positive thing, because there's interest, there'll be a source of revenue to the city. There's also an opportunity where we can restaurant. There's also an opportunity where a little restaurant is going to be part of that development, which is a good thing. So it's a resource, it's a natural resource that we all can benefit from. My first question before, before anything else, anything else was, where is the parking going to take place? So there's an effort that the organizers are going to work with MACOM across the street to ensure there's parking before anything else, before there's one shovel put in the ground. Because we see what happens when we have the regattas. We see what happens when there's festivals. It's a parking nightmare for the people and the residents of Pataqueville. So that being said, it's a great opportunity. I think it's exciting for Pataqueville. However, conditions that Pataqueville and city residents will not, will be afforded an opportunity to use and participate, and they should, and we will make sure of that. But also to make sure that it doesn't become a major problem for the people who live in Pataqueville, quite frankly. Because we're the ones that's going to have to bear the burden of parking in large part. So I think that's a paramount interest. We all already bear, you know, a lot of the burden of parking for the other events and the traffic and the congestion, which I think the people in Pataqueville are very kind and support these efforts. But it's a good resource. We have to make sure that we plan first, it's accessible, and it could be a source of revenue for the city.
Councilor Elliott, technical streets of Greed Park, at the beginning and ending of a school day. Do you support a return to neighborhood schools if you remove many of the school buses from our schools?
I do. I do support. I filed this motion when I was a mayor in 2015, 2016, one of those two years. I think it makes some sense. The court order of 1972 was to integrate our schools. Is it any one of our schools, they are completely integrated? So I think it's, Pataqueville is a perfect example of the integration and the diversity in our city. So I do support that. I think it makes sense for this reason. More parents drive their children to school on a daily basis. I stand out at the Rock Bridge in the morning and I see the number of parents driving their kids to school. They're crisscrossing the city. We get a report, I believe four years ago, from Mr. Deco of the School Department, that showed by zip code the number of students crisscrossing this city. And it's incredible. It would, it would reduce the number of time that the students are on the bus, which I think is a paramount importance. Some kids are going, leaving their house at eight o'clock and they're not getting home till four o'clock in the afternoon because of the bus schedule. So that's first and foremost. It'll save costs for busing. But it also, I firmly believe that neighborhood schools create and strengthen communities. They develop bonds, whether it's, you know, teacher organizations or kids play together in the neighborhood. I think it makes all the sense in the world. I don't know why we haven't done it. There was, you know, resistance on that motion, and I think that was seven, six, seven years ago. But I think that we should go back to neighborhood schools. All schools are performing well, and it's just not, some of the schools are performing well in some of the neighborhoods that were concerned in the past. So I think we've achieved the diversity. I think that we should go back to neighborhood schools. Clearly, the traffic being really large, but it's a quality of life for the kids, the parents, and the neighborhoods all.
Yeah, it's a good idea on many levels. You know, traffic being one of them, but another one is the $3 million savings if you do what the schools fulfill the city. You know, and also there's a consent decree that has to be looked at and has to be agreed upon and able to do it. You know, I think that Lowell has been more than welcoming. We love to bring in, you know, kids from all over the world to the city of Lowell and to each member's school, middle school and grade school. And in the city, you don't see the same mixed diversity that you want anywhere else in the city. This is not Lowell 30 years ago, 20 years ago. I would really encourage looking into neighborhood schools. Again, not just for, you know, for parents and the ease in this, the access of bringing their kids to and from school, but, you know, if it does create a bond, it creates some pride in the neighborhood. And, you know, it could be a benefit only to the children, you know, for taxpayers, to those that travel with bridges in Pataqueville. They're from anywhere from 2:30 to 7 o'clock at night, or 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning.
Thank you. Councilor Ward, it's a lot of cost.
Is that important?
Thirty percent of the land, thirty percent of the land available for development in Lowell is located in Pataqueville. And as you know, the city has authorized the Packerville master plan. And that master plan has served us well. Since that plan was written well over a decade ago, there have been many changes. And we still have some big changes coming, including the impact of the new bridge. How can we get the plan updated? And how can it be recognized as part of the city law's master plan?
Sure. You know, knowing that the plan was created in 2006, and it was a 10-year plan, so a little bit behind the times, you know, we, you know, as a show of solidarity with Pataqueville, we're happy to file a motion, Councilor Elliott, to bring it back forward again and to get the ball rolling before the end of the election. And going through a plan, it's a lot of things, even back in 2006, that we see that's still issuing now. I think that the 32% of the open spaces and things like that, how you deserve them. We talked about laying in park grants. We talked about the situation up of Tottenham Road, that we get tomorrow night, you know, 22 privately owned acres that, you know, the fear is can be sold to a developer. You know, if you take it, you know, by acreage, eating that homes could possibly go in there, right? So that's a situation that I deal with in the here and now. Going forward, you know, the 2006 plan, it was probably 25, 30 people that are all involved. Those are the neighborhood group and planners, people that live in Pataqueville, historians, you know, traffic engineers, you know, schools, everything was taken into account. And knowing that it's probably five years old to do, it would differ in some same concerns as Packer 2006, you know, let's get the ball rolling.
So my, one of my main concerns is protection of waterfront along the river. There was a recommendation in the master plan to create a suburban waterfront district since that time. We should back down on that, quite frankly. So I think that the city needs to look at some of those parcels, whether it's SMUs, single-family district, or the DMU. We need to take a look and, and address that. I think the development on Boulevard with that multi-story, two-tower development was, doesn't fit the character of that neighborhood. And I would not like to see that happen. Again, we also have to put some smart zoning in for, when it comes to retail in that particular area. When it comes to development in the city, we have a zoning code that is intact. It's in place. I don't think that we should change it. It took an awful long time to do that, and I was proud of sitting there and to support you. Are there some amendments that come out before the city council? We get a fellow vetted through the planning, planning board, planning department, and that's the approach. When it comes to additional development in Pataqueville, we can't get over the bridges now. Parking has become a problem, particularly around the university in that particular neighborhood. So, you know, it's time to slow the development and to do it properly. And I will say, you know, in particular, the development of East Meadow Road and Mammoth Road, I don't know how that passed muster through the building department. If I read the zoning code and we specifically had a zoning subcommittee meeting on this, that development doesn't meet the setback requirement in interpretation. It has to be a mean average within a one-block area. There's only one particular property on Mammoth Road. So I don't know whether we, everything else is setback. So I think that a project like that has upset the neighborhood, not just the neighborhood, that development of that size was allowed to take place in that area. And, you know, I, I commit as a district council that that should not ever happen again. I hope my colleagues will agree. So how do we preserve? We make sure that the zoning code that is in place stays down.
We're going to move on to the third section, and this is the DPD Housing Report. And just as a preface, in March of this year, 2021, the City of Lowell Department of Planning and Development introduced a set of recommendations that we now refer to as the DPD Housing Report. Some of the recommendations were considered controversial. You could say very controversial. So there are, this is a one-word answer that we're looking for first. Could you please indicate with a yes or a no if you have read the report?
Yes.
I'm going to continue the question with you, that doesn't challenge us as one of the ones.
That's fine.
We're going to proceed with a series of questions regarding the housing report. That report recommends modifying existing dimensional requirements, and more specifically, increasing the maximum allowed building heights and increasing the number of stories. Would you explain whether you agree or disagree with modifying our existing dimensional requirements?
I don't agree on this, the dimension requirements. I think it just cited a perfect example of what happens to a neighborhood when you have these towers that were built on the waterfront. I think in order to keep, one of the initial statements in the master plan, the Packerville master plan, is, as well as the city plan, is to preserve the character of the neighborhood. So the notion that we want to build up to pack more units onto a lot makes no sense to me. That we've seen this time and time again. It just exacerbates parking. It increases density to a point where it's not consistent with, with the neighborhood character. So I don't support modifying or increases, increasing height restrictions with restrictions.
Yeah, I was supporting that. I think the scariest part of that section of the housing report is the actual suggestion to eliminate the need for off-street parking, you know, just throw all those rules out the window. You know, we can't have any conversation of developing those smart growth. Talking parking and traffic and the effect it would have on the neighborhood. You know, some of the ratio ideas that I thought were exorbitant as well in that section of the report. You know, the maximum height and the stories, you know, we continue to see those proposals made in front of planning boards and boards of appeals. You know, when you have hard and fast rules put in place, they're there for you. And hopefully, it will true state in place for all time.
The next question was from a colleague.
Well, actually.
Oh, I see, I see. That's right, yes, okay. Many residents moved to West Pataqueville, just stay away from the question system. Many residents moved to West Pataqueville because of the neighborhood character. The housing report seeks to eradicate single-family zones. What do you tell those residents who bought a single-family zone and have no interest in having any apartments in a designated single-family zone? Councilor Ward?
Now, we decided to move to Pataqueville as a single-family neighborhood. And we moved and we lived here because of the neighborhood and because, you know, we loved everything in Pataqueville has to offer. I told residents that if I asked them about it, that I approve of changing the single-family zone. You know, some of the suggestions about, you know, bringing a single-family home to a four-family or three-story or three-family, you know, that part of the report to me was laziness. It was taking all the responsibility away, you know, from zoning, from the Board of Appeals, from DPW. You have to look at any type of development about what policy it is in the area of smart growth that takes neighborhood input, addresses issues, density, the parking, the traffic, all those things have to be taken into account. And, you know, this important thing about the report was that those issues basically cost by the wayside. And the suggestions that were made were put in the report.
Well, let's, let's first recognize for the record that Councilor Ward filed a motion. He filed a motion to request a report on options for affordable housing in the city. He's saying here that, you know, he doesn't support wholesale changes. However, that contradicts the statement that the zoning subcommittee meeting on May 25th, that was advertised on, on LTC and it's still there, where he thinks that we should continue the discussion with ADUs. Now, if you look at the report, ADUs, attached regrow units, is just another word in the report for adding apartments, about adding apartments. So this menu of recommendations of expanding affordable housing was requested by Councilor. Now, I don't think this report, quite frankly, is insulting to the people in the city law. It's insulting to prior boards and city councils that have worked tirelessly to adopt a fair, a reasonable, affordable zoning code. And project after project after project, we have approved, and I've never voted against one affordable housing project as long as I've been, because they're right. They didn't affect the character of any neighborhood. They weren't sweeping changes, and we are utilizing, underutilizing pieces of property. And I could list them from the boot mills to, to mass mills, to the lofts, to CBA Gorm Street, all of these projects. They're well done, but they were planned, the latest one on, right down on Merrimack Street, which under credit, it used to be 32 units of affordable housing. Lowell has done its fair share. We've exceeded our state cap, and we're, we're a big community. It's by percentage, we're at 12.4%. So we'll continue to, and I'll continue to support, support affordable housing. But this report targets specifically those neighborhoods that are land raked in Pataqueville and Belvedere, to Long Island and Pataqueville. And it's clearly stated in the report, so I don't think this makes sense. I think Lowell, we continue to do in Pataque. We also have the housing 30, we have 1,200 units of Section 8 certificate housing. So we have done our fair share, and we'll continue in those areas that are occupied. However, where they're expanding, allowing changes to just allow apartments to be built in single-family homes, it just doesn't make sense. It's already complicated issues. We also, we already see illegal housing continuously being developed in the university areas, single-family homes being converted to three- and four-unit bedrooms. People call me and they tell me all the time, they have the trash, the parties, the illegal developments, it's got to stop. And neighbors shouldn't help the police their neighborhoods. They infected, they invested their life savings into this home. They're not these huge mansions. They're, they're what they worked their entire life for. And they bought it in a particular neighborhood, they bought it with certain circumstances. And I think that, I don't support, I don't, I don't support the off-street parking and, and these recommendations. There are 19 recommendations, and none of them, you know, I, I don't think they're going to benefit the city.
Thank you. So, Councilor Elliott is correct. We had a discussion at the zoning subcommittee. And so much so to the fact that except for a nail on it, explaining my position that in our apartment, ADU with restrictions put in place by the size of the addition or parking that it has to be involved as well, we have to house the sole AD restriction for family only, every other same time does that. You know, Councilor Elliott has stated publicly that he supports ADUs under the special permit process. It's just like yesterday in the newspaper. But the special permit process can delay a project every four to six months. It can add additional six to. can delay a project every four to six months, it can add additional six to 10,000 dollars, you know, by going through, you know, getting a land survey, the permit process, the hiring of an attorney, you know, to guide someone. You know, those are the land of the city of working families. You know, we had a discussion earlier about seniors, you know, a lot of those seniors that may want to go back with their, with their family, you know, and, you know, we're not talking about putting a thousand square foot separate apartment covered with the four, you know, rooms and this and that. You know, we're talking about, you know, taking care of our seniors, taking care of our kids returning from college. You know, the average price of a home in the state is, is higher, and Lowell has gone up as well. You know, people are putting well over the means of income towards housing. You know, and again, I can't stress that enough, you know, we are looking to help our families in the city, you know, under those circumstances, you know, but I don't want to help anybody. That's not the idea behind it whatsoever. It's, you know, showing some care and compassion to families that, you know, and this deal is very, very difficult. Again, we're going to average fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a month for seeing a home, in a certain class of seeing a home. So, you know, I've talked to multiple people, I had a discussion with two neighbors just yesterday about this project. One gentleman went through the special permit process, and it took a little longer to complete his home, and it was much more expensive, and his next door neighbor is trying to look for it now, and he's running into a lot of problems. So, again, this particular aspect of the report, you know, I've stated many times publicly, and even sent out informational email to the residents stating why I support this thing.
Thank you, Councilor. You both have mentioned that parking in many Pupacville neighborhoods is a challenge, especially in neighborhoods close to the university. The DPD Housing Report recommends eliminating or reducing off-street parking amendments. This is in direct conflict with the parking study that was commissioned by the City of Lowell. So, so which is it? Do you need more parking? Should we have less? Can you explain your answer?
I think it's a suggestion to eliminate parking requirements. You know, what you're doing is taking away, you know, a Lowell residence ability, you know, quality of life issues, just have a normal life. It's, you know, in reading it, that was giving one of those shocking thoughts of the report. And again, you know, asking for it, 100%, you know, yes, I did, Councilor, myself, looking at the options that were, that were available to the city, sure. You know, but in view of the report, you know, nothing has come of it. I think a lot of that was, you know, the way it was written was kind of odd, almost kind of a different tone. It wasn't just an informational piece, it was more of a, you know, subjective rather than objective, which I found odd as well, which is my personal approach, which no longer play about city. But again, taking away parking is the whole opposite of what people in Pupacville need, you know, and it's a citywide, you know, issue as well, but, you know, the removal of parking, not being able to apply for them, you know, just taking away someone's ability to take over their life.
Thank you. Councilor.
Yeah, thank you, John. I know Councilor Ruck has a select memory around election time, that's why I specifically want to watch the meeting again. And firstly, clarify, never once do I support ADUs. Never once, because they're not allowed in the city. I support in-law additions, that's what's allowed. So council should read the zoning code, that's what's, that's what's allowed, and that's what we have been adopting. It's a zoning board of appeals process that if their family wants to put an in-law apartment, an in-law addition, not apartment, they go through the process. There's a gentleman just about 65 km out that wants to put an addition on his house. He's going through the process. So that's what, and Councilor, just, so you know, you can go revisit, revisit your comments. It seems odd that a locked door not put in place supports some changes in other district. So, just for the viewers, an ADU is another word for an apartment, separate, by the way, or not. Councilor Ruck supports that, I don't. I don't support that at all whatsoever. An in-law apartment, you go before, it's part of the structure. Because this is the issue. The issue is whether it's for a senior or whether it's for a college student who will be back home, or somebody else. Once that college student moves, that becomes a rentable property, and we've seen that, and that's what we're going to see happen. So the notion that it's just, you know, it's going to help out, and then it's going to remain, it's not going to happen time and time again. We've already seen illegal, illegal apartments being added, and then that's where a single-family turns into a two-family, and that's the difference. When it comes to parking, the recommendation in this report is to increase housing, affordable housing, and we get rid of parking. The person that wrote this A Plan has no clue what's going on in the neighborhood. So I don't support it, I never supported it, we should keep the restrictions that are in place. People are being inundated in Pupacville with parking from students. So the notion that we want to increase a two-family to a three-family, which Councilor Ruck, he put a, he put a mailer out, well, it's completely inconsistent with what this report states, he filed a motion, and, and what the record is, outside of a mailer, because I think you're a loud and clear, the people in Pupacville want to keep the zoning that is in place, and I've said that since day one. So parking, no. We need to improve the parking, we need to enforce the parking, the platform parking. But to go to the permit where, you know, anybody can get a private platform, that's fine, that's not fair that people pay the taxes.
Thank you, Councilor. Pupacville has many housing violations due to stealth doors. Overcrowding in single-family homes in the university area has resulted in the need for increased police presence and increased reports of rats due to overflowing trash. This housing report recognizes that safety risks are found in large numbers in stealth doors, but then it recommends lifting the occupancy limit on single-family homes. Do you agree that lifting occupancy limits will increase safety of our residents? If you do, why? And if not?
I don't know if people live in one. Absolutely not. We discussed this, I believe it was two years ago, it's only subcommittee, when there's a proposal, implement that, I believe, to allow for nine rooms to be converted with no parking for college students. That makes no sense. If you walk up University Avenue, Street London, or that have been, that have been converting, there was student housing there. The, the effects of that is neighbors complaining about parties, and certainly when they were about the mounds of trash that are left in the trash disposal during that particular point in time when they were in school. So, no, I don't, I don't support increasing that at all whatsoever. We need to be compliant. It's a single-family home, it has to be a single-family home. It can't be a stealth door, and that is going to continue to raise its ugly head, I feel, as the university continues to, wanted to have more students. And the solution to that, we have a health inspector, that I'm proud that I led the effort on. The second part of that that I've advocated for the longest time is additional building inspectors, building inspectors on a weekend that are accessible. I remember getting a call and luckily I knew somebody when there was a truck that drove, it was a tractor trailer truck, drove down a road that shouldn't have been down, ripped the electrical service off, woman was coming home from the, from the hospital, and she had no electrical, and she couldn't come home until that was served. Luckily, I was able to call. We need an inspector on call. We need more building inspectors in this city. It is a priority.
Thank you.
I filed multiple motions, I'm turning on inspection staff, and we go back to 2014, my first year on the council, of course, city manager, hiring more inspection staff to work with, firing acoustic powers, issues in each Pupacville, and you know, two inspections. You know, this has been something that I've been requesting for a long time. And just recently, again, in the neighborhood and how it goes, you know, a person came up to me, told me there's some issues with sanitation and odor defestation, you know, immediately called neighborhood services, something to follow me. You know, and you have to put in place, you know, inspections in Pupacville, you're looking into a lactate home, it's actually a drakeet at the top of the street, and obviously a fellow that went out to ask all students, you know, explain the situation and how properly dispose of the garbage. This is something that everybody has been working towards, you know, to script that there's some progress being made, but, you know, going forward, you know, you have to have responsibility, you know, another motion that I filed twice over the past couple of years is to have anonymous information, main email, phone number, publicly posted on the property, and that, you know, that has been successful with certain areas that have had problems, and just continue to think of new programs, not reactive ways to deal with the situation.
Thank you, Councilor. The topic's been touched on, additional dwelling limits for ADUs. And that's the official term for an apartment built within a primary dwelling or a separate detached building. The housing report uses the following quote, "Every municipality should allow ADUs to be added to owner-occupied, single-family houses and to be rented out." In 2006, testimony was presented to all city council that when Woober was looking at ADU legislation, the chair of the planning board estimated that the enforcement department would have to be increased tenfold among ADUs. Could you explain where you stand on the issue of ADUs?
So, and again, I said many times before, and I don't know why it seems to be misconstrued, in-law apartments is what that I've been advocating for. Again, and there are restrictions and guidelines that are put in place to make this work. You know, you can't just rent out, it's not something that, it's a family situation, you know, to where if you have a loved one, and you want them to, to live, you know, have a lock good to make a living, that needs to be assessed. And again, when it's going to be sold, there'll be restrictions, there'll be a put in place that has to be determined. You know, we have speed limit laws that have to be followed, and when those are not followed, you pull a lot of police and you give a citation. And that, but what you have is families that are trying to do the right thing, you know, buy their loved ones. This is not a crisis ad to be put in, you know, on the internet, I remember, you know, a three-bedroom, you know, two-bath, you know, AD unit, right? You know, it cannot be more, you know, specific to signing it, it's in-law option that, you know, again, can be done under the special permit process right now in the city, but it's much extra time, it's a lot more money to go through that process. Thank you.
Look, I think the people in the city are smart enough to know that adding an apartment for a family member, and then the family member leaves, turns into a renting, renting property. That's what ADU, in my opinion, will do to the city. Residents not have to police sometimes their neighborhood for Airbnb's, which are not allowed in the city. I've received multiple, multiple complaints from people thinking that they're renting out their homes. So I think this doesn't make any sense. I don't believe that neighborhood neighbors should have to worry about, you know, if somebody is going to apply for an apartment, then what's going to happen after? Because we know what's going to happen after. They're going to, people are going to rent it out. Or the property is going to be transferred, and it's going to be sold as a two-family, or an apartment that can be rental income. It's happening all over the place. So even in 2017, there was zoning subcommittee, and the ADUs came up, and it was not brought forward, it was voted down. So there's a reason for that, because the issue is targeted at single-family neighborhoods, and it just, it's just not the right approach, in my opinion. So, you know, the recommendation, particularly in Pupacville, where we already know there's stealth doors, we already know that there is illegal housing, we already know there's an enforcement issue with Airbnb's, why would we want to complicate it? We're a caring community. I, I can't imagine that when there's hardship and a family member wants to put an addition on, that the zoning board of appeals will not approve that. I've not heard of an instance in all my time, but to allow a separate apartment just opens up, think that Pandora's box in this neighborhood, and the residents of this neighborhood don't deserve it, and I don't support it, and I'm going to fight tooth and nail for the people against this proposal, that my opponent at the subcommittee meeting, just to let you know, at 3428, said we need to continue the discussion on ADUs. That's my position, that says.
Thank you both. We have many law-abiding residents that do follow the zoning codes. The City of Lowell has a staff, a building, and health inspectors, whose full-time job is to enforce the building and zoning codes. This report recommends zoning amnesty for illegal units. Starting with you, Councilor Allen, do you agree with the zoning amnesty for illegal units, and could you explain your position?
No, I don't. I agree with this recommendation either. Why would we set a precedent that it's okay to break the law, and I'm going to ask for forgiveness later? That doesn't make sense. When there's an illegal unit, it has to be part of the compliance. I've had a number of occasions where I have been in contact with the building department when such an incident took place, and it has to, has to take place, it needs to revert it back towards intended and allowable use, period. So I, I don't support this, it doesn't make any sense, and again, I think it sends a message out to those that are going to break the law that it's okay to do it, just ask for, now, ask for forgiveness. I can remember, it was in the Belvedere section of the city where there was significant illegal development and a multifamily going on, and it was, it was quite a process, but I think it sent a message, I think it's important to send a message to those who are compliant that go through the process, to file the application. Again, just like this gentleman that I visited on the 65 km out, he went through the process, wants to put an addition on, he's going to the zoning board of appeals. So why should, why should that husband and wife follow the process, and then we allow someone that has broken the law to say, oh, it's okay, we're going to let you continue? No.
Thank you.
Essentially, you know, bringing amnesty for people who are us only advocates is pretty horrible. You know, it's, it's almost similar to, you know, the crime spree, you know, harassment for anything. So I just, you know, it was odd to read, you know, in order, suggesting that that was me, but again, you know, doing it the wrong way, and giving forgiveness, continuing to the wrong way.
Thank you. How are we doing for today?
We've been perfect. I think we get to 22, but we can decide if they want to do the last few questions.
Okay, great, okay. We're bumping up against the plan that we had committed to, if everybody okay, if you'd like to take a break, we'll keep going. It's been exceptional, it's done. This would be you, Councilor. All concerned with the unique neighborhoods, and many residents are proud of where they live, Pupacville is no exception. The housing report recommends rescinding the neighborhood characters by the government. Do you agree?
So, you know, speaking of pride in neighborhoods, you know, growing up in Lowell Highlands and, you know, coming over to Pupacville and seeing, we're all of what it has to offer and so forth. You know, the character of each and every single neighborhood in the city is distinct, it's rich and must be proud of. Again, and going back to the report, with the exception of the in-law apartments where strict guidelines can be put in place to make it work, you know, the process of going through, whether it's a lot story added on, or an extra room, you know, whether it be a commercial or residential, you know, property as well, you know, it's there for a reason. And but again, like, say it again, I think if you have the correct guidelines put in place to take care of a loved one, you know, that is one thing that I would support. And most of all, of the rest of the report was really something difficult to do.
Thank you.
No, I don't, I don't support getting rid of the special permit. Now, we've been dealing with zoning, this city has been dealing with zoning for decades, since its inception. And it's gone through a number of iterations, it's been revamped, there are amendments that have been changed. But in 2004, under the, I would say, under two distinguished gentlemen, Adam Beatty and George Correios, they undertook a complete revision to put together zones that will take all the spot zoning where in single family neighborhoods, two family neighborhoods, you have sixty multifamily condominiums, complex, just travel throughout the city. And we put it into that because we wanted to preserve, we wanted to ensure when people were buying a home, that it was consistent. The street state was consistent. There was an overburden of parking or access, we want to preserve open space. And that's what we have in place. And there's a process. You can go for variance, you can go for special permit if you will have hardship or an exception to the current table of uses or the current zones that are in place. There are reasons why there are restrictions for open space and you can't pave your entire yard. You need side yard setbacks. So, there's green space and you're not in certain zones that there's green space and that people want to have a backyard. So, I don't, I support what is in place because there is a process, there is a board that has appointed members. So, let's, let's be consistent and stay with this. This report, this report takes and dissembles all of the good work that I think, and progress that we have made since it was adopted back in 2004. And does it need some, you know, occasion, there are amendments that come before us? Yes. However, blanket wholesale changes based on this? No. This will, this will affect the character of every neighborhood in the city. And I don't believe anybody who's read this, but I think they would be a little shocked at discussing, you know, the recommendations.
Thank you. Ten percent is the threshold for our community to be relieved from the mandatory provision of the state's Chapter 40b law. Eighty percent of Massachusetts cities and towns do not meet the 10% threshold. However, Lowell's inventory of subsidized housing exceeds 12%. Do we really need more affordable housing in Lowell? Or shouldn't our neighbors step up to this challenge?
Yeah, so, you know, you look at what Lowell offers, our residents, where it offers our newcomers, our urban population, refugees that come to the city, you know, with our nonprofit organizations, Housing Authority, CTI, and things like that. We are a leader in the state in those areas. You know, you would, you hope that our surrounding towns, Chelmsford, Draken, Tootsbury, Tinsborough, where it's welcoming, as Lowell is. You know, our first show that I think I've met for many years now, you know, in the seed projects, you know, something with the gene dog, they are just part of the council. You know, we need seed projects, you know, maybe on migrant street or so forth. You know, that's where, that has to go through the process, where it has to be taken into account. You know, the neighborhood stands, the residents that live there, that they take on as well. And, you know, you want to be as welcoming as you can to everybody, I think that's what makes Lowell great. You know, but at the same time, you have to be able to decide, you know, when enough is enough.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott?
Sure, so I think that there will be projects as they come along that will have affordable housing problems to it. I think it makes, I think it makes some sense. Can we do more? Yes, and we should do it incrementally, but not the suggestion that is made in this, this report, these suggestions. You know, this report indicates there is a need in Lowell. Lowell can only do so much. There is, we just talked about gridlock in the city, there were too many cars, not only cut through but in the city, and with more units becoming more cars. So, the notion that we're going to continue to build, if we build around a transportation hub, you know, the question is, and I think that's one of the elements of the Housing Choice Act, build around your transportation hubs because then you don't have, you know, people aren't coming in with cars. However, when you get out into neighborhoods and to allow for development of apartments in these, in these neighborhoods? No, that doesn't make sense. They're coming with cars and that just complicates things. So, you know, this report says Lowell should be building over a 15-year period, we have a shortfall of 3,400 homes. This is a planning council, you know, kind of telling us what to do. Where am I going to import 3,400 homes? Where can we build 220 multifamily units and 110 family, single family units? It makes no sense. So, to answer your question, yes, we do, do our fair share and we do a lot. You know, I'll just reference the editorial in Lowell Sunday, it says, you know what? Lowell does exceed our 10% by a significant number and will continue to do it. We're a very caring community, and I've supported all of those. However, if you look at our surrounding communities, Draken, Carlisle, Broughton, Pepro, they're 5%, 3%, you know, just under, you know, a little 4%. These are the communities I think that the Housing Choice Act we're focusing on to allow zoning changes because the reason why they're so low in these communities is for it to be a multi, multifamily, there's no shortage. So, to me, that's how they get around it. So, I think that we will continue to adopt, just like the Wynn project. I brought the motion forward to bring the Wynn back to the table because nothing was going on in the Hamilton Canal District. And that proposal was coming with mixed use, workforce housing, low income housing. And those are the projects that we should be, you know, looking at. Not making proposals to change the zoning code for additional units being developed in other boroughs.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott, almost every recommendation in the DPD Housing Report increases population density in our neighborhoods. Do you believe that increased density will increase or decrease our population access?
If you look at figures on the cost of additional development in the city, it ranged from anywhere from 5,000 to 50, depending upon. It's an increasing significant variance, increases the cost of infrastructure, of police, of fire, of teachers. It's a burden that we need to take into consideration. So, yes, there is a cost, there's a significant cost and it's laid out in, in the master plan.
Yeah, so I think lastly, this is such a, this came through, also around 120,000 people population wise. And again, stable for who we are, it says it as well, that's so welcoming, you know, to all that come to us. You know, we are more dependent on federal money, more dependent on state money. But again, we're going to realize the, the pressure on the school system. We realize, you know, the pressure on our emergency services as well. You know, there's the interest of public wins and, you know, a lot of studies that they mean, they know, it doesn't happen, right? So, you know, you become the CEO of this and it seems to be taking people. We do so because of who we are and what we have been and what we're going to do going forward. We have to have, with the avenues in place, you know, to make sure that we're not putting any extra pressure burden on the taxpayer that, you know, works hard and pays their taxes and respects, you know, off of it. But there's a very, five, or he's got, he's at the front door. You know, there's a first storm, you know, that's keep the plot, traction put out and it's picked up. So, they are all gosling together and so that all these things.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have 10 minutes left and, you know, three more questions left, which would be like five minutes. And then there's really a candidate each, two minutes each to wrap it up, so.
That's eliminated one of the questions, the two others are quick and we'll still hit the button. Councilor Elliott, there was a 1.4, oh, we're moving to Section 4, citywide increase. There was a 1.4 billion dollar increase in the city's pension assessment. Can you tell us what the reason for this is and what's the solution?
Sure, you know, it's a simple reason for it, that people who are, you know, who have more retirees, I think especially the COVID situation that we've gone through the last eighteen months. You know, some are still a lot of it altogether. And adds to the burden that's placed on the city. You know, it's a state issue as well. And, you know, we have to make sure that our responsibilities of paying down, you know, the pensions are prepared for the way that's, if not, you know, your line reading takes a huge hit, you're going to be much more expensive to borrow or accept capital plans. You know, but, you know, the pension liabilities have been there for a long, long time. But I think the city did a good job in paying down, staying on top of it. But it's something that for a long-term plan, put in place, those costs will only rise because, again, people are living longer. You know, they're productive, they're having a healthy lives.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott?
Sure, so the Lowell retirement system, like every retirement system in the state, relies on a number of variables. Revenues derived from income, from investment income, revenue derived from contributors and as well as, look, what expenses are going out with a number of individual beneficiaries. So, the reason why it does increase is that power accessory. So, after the investments, after our actuarials, the city has to pick up whatever the difference is. So, interestingly enough, moving forward, those individuals that are now entering the pension system, they're not required to, they're required to contribute a higher percentage. So, these, this is one of these fixed costs in the budget that hurts. Because when we're trying to hold a line, just like charter schools and some other fixed costs that we try to control, though it's not completely within our capacity. So, you know, we made some good investments, the beneficiaries have to contribute more and the rate tells us that we have to be self-funded. So, the reason for the increase is that by 2032, Lowell has to be self-sustaining and that's the requirement that every retirement system has throughout the state. Makes sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you. The last question. General.
You guys didn't respond, I mean, we were saying, right, this schedule.
The responses are really interesting. Councilor Elliott, there was a 1.9 billion dollar increase in trash collection that's attributed to a problem with recycling. Can you tell me what the issue is that caused this and what's the solution?
So, the 1.9 million is a legal problem. Legal disposal of solid waste into the recycling and it's not just the plastic that's. Air conditioners, construction debris, you'd be amazed at what people put in the recycling there. So, that's the 1.9 million of feet, if, if that's, if that's the one item to look at. We also have increased tipping fees, the cost to dispose is also increased. So, it's, it's a dire situation and it's costing more to recycle. In the past, you would have a revenue stream, whether it was from cardboard, whether it was from plastic bottles that you would ship or we would get revenue source. The market for those recyclables are no longer, and I dare say maybe virtually none at this point. So, it's becoming more costly to recycle, there are more fees. We've been out with outreach, we've been out to tag barrels with citations. You know, we need to get reports from the city manager on how we are doing with those fines, but it's astronomical. As a result of the program, there's been more trash also. People are home worn and they're eating home worn, so there's more trash as well, so it's, but it's becoming expensive. Trash is becoming expensive, tipping fees, disposal fees, transportation fees, as well as the fines. And I believe you're referencing that, that those fines are a result of the illegal, illegal money.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, if we, they store by time recycling. And if there's one illegal, you know, material thrown, the whole ton is charged. So, that's why you get in the total price of almost $200,000. And this is a new thing, this started off a few years ago on my council, it was $700,000 we were paying and has only increased ever since. You know, the outreach that's, that's been done for the fines and so forth has simply not worked. The idea of stripping down those recyclable, anyways, is out there. I filed a motion two months ago about incorporating Massey and UMass Lowell students to do a door outreach program of telling people what is allowable to go into recycling and what is not. You know, there's a program that has started as of October 1st. And all we can do is totally get rid of our recycling program. As a theory, outreach, continually, you know, the waste management and inspections and things like that go forward. Because the idea of totally getting rid of recycling is not on the table at this time. But, you know, you as a city really need to provide as much public outreach as we can. Get the word out and, you know, waste day is becoming a huge burden on the city for trying to direct them.
Thank you. Dental Assistance Council has been holding candidate nights for decades. And I moderated five or six or seven of those. One advantage of the new district councillor we're seeing tonight is just an exceptional hour and a half with both of you. And the residents of Atticaville have a much better opportunity to get to know you through your responses tonight. And we appreciate all the work that you have been doing and all the work that you're doing during the election period and over the years, the work that you will continue to do. I'd like to thank you back for your time and all of your efforts. Any closing thoughts?
Well, we were going to give each candidate two minutes. We had a, you know, they addressed the citizens a decade ago. But we did an hour and 45 minutes because what I did was I had them come at six, so we started maybe like 10 and a half or 15 minutes past. So, it's going to be one, like an hour and 45 minutes. But every single event we've ever had for candidate night was almost two hours. So, we kept within what we usually do, but because we had to make the change in the night, we were able to add in about, you know, half hour. So, this actually worked out the best.
Well, we're in a democracy. Councilors, would you like two minutes to summarize?
Sure, I'd like to ask.
All right. I believe we ended with you, Councilor Elliott.
I have the opening statement, so.
First, so.
Okay, great, good, that works out well.
Thank you, it was, it was a tremendous evening, you know, to sit down and talk about, you know, your personal life, your professional life, and your political life of how the field of the neighborhood, the field of the city, and how you feel about things going forward. You know, today is another advantage I believe to connect with the people of Atticaville. You know, the range of topics was wide and beneficial going forward. you know, the range of topics was wide and beneficial, moving forward, and, you know, I'll only promise, you know, as you're a district one, Petacorville City Councillor, to always be accessible, to always listen, to always take into everybody's account before making a decision, because now you become the voice of the neighborhood. I assume your voice, the position really belongs to the people and the residents of Petacorville, I take it very serious. You know, I started, you know, the process of being a district one, I came in a long time ago, and I've made many contacts that, you know, I'll have both off my political career, so that's my benefit as well. So, I want to thank you to everybody that has pledged their support, and thank you everybody that has reached out, not just on political level, but on personal level, and that's something that I, I take the heart, and I hope to be able to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and Depp, as well as to the members of the PCC and the vote in public. Thank you for the opportunity to serve for all these years. My background is in finance, in government, in finance, environmental protection, conservation, recreation. Petacorville is where I grew up. I went to school here, I went to Central Petacorville School, attended church, I coached youth sports, and I came back and I raised my family here, because Petacorville is a unique neighborhood. I really, and what I really enjoy about living in Petacorville, I've got a lot of life. We have the state forest for hiking, we have the bull guard if you wanna walk, we have boat launches, we have the regatta field, and we have the new library basket. So, you know, moving forward, I feel that I am the best candidate. We're entering a time where we're receiving an unprecedented amount of money from the federal and state government. I feel our city needs a member of the city council, who has the experience to ensure these funds are spent appropriately, and that Petacorville gets its fair share. I've done that throughout the years, and I'm just starting out. I feel I'm that person. Your goal for me is a vote for fiscal accountability, and open government. That's who I have been as a city councillor, that's who I'm gonna be as your district councillor. I answer my phone, I pick up, I answer texts, I answer emails, and I respond. Being a city councillor requires dedication, determination, and above all, a commitment to the district, and to the neighborhood, and to each individual, individual, one at a time. That's who I am, that I'm not gonna change. So, in closing, I thank you again. If you've taken the time to call me on an issue, it's important to me. If I tell you I'm gonna do something, I'm true to my word, that's who I've been as a city councillor for twenty-four years. In closing, I hope I prove myself to you. Please consider voting for me, Rodney Elliott, on November 2nd. If you'd like to learn more about me, or my campaign, you can go to my Facebook page, or my, my website, rhodneyelliott.com. All my contact information is there, and any upcoming events, I would be happy to sit with you, and earn your vote, one by one. I thank you for consideration.
Thank you. One last message to the residents of Petacorville. You've had an opportunity to get to know the two candidates a little bit better, and now it's up to you to do the single most important thing, and that is, in November, get out and vote for one of these candidates. Thank you very much.
Thank you.